All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Springfield City Council. It is now 5:05 on Monday, May 11th. Madam Clerk, if you could just give me one moment to admit Counselor Whitfield was admitted. Can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez.
Present. Welcome back.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield.
Counselor Whitfield.
Counselor Davila, present. Good to hear it, Commissioner.
I'm here.
Counselor Whitfield.
How about you?
Counselor Fenton. Absent. Counselor Curran. Absent. Counselor Ramos.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman.
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present.
Will the councilors please rise for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if councilors could please mute their mic when you are not speaking. And Madam Clerk, if you could please acknowledge, I'm not sure, I don't think they're sitting in any seats, but if you could please acknowledge Counselor Fenton.
Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Curran. Absent. Okay.
Uh, Counselor Curran is...
He's present.
Counselor Curran.
Mr. President, a point of information. Counselor Curran is trying to log on, but he's just experiencing a difficulty.
Okay, all right. So we'll wait for Counselor Curran to log on and then we'll acknowledge that he is present at that time. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item on the agenda?
Before I call the items on the agenda, I'd like to ask all the councilors to please remember to do your state ethics requirement that I sent to you. The HR needs it, our personal department needs it. So if you all can just take a moment and do that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
The first item on the agenda is the March Revenue versus Expenditure Report.
Can you acknowledge Sean Curran is present?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Counselor Curran?
Present.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solicitor.
Sorry.
That's quite all right. Madam Clerk, can we please call the first item on the agenda? Did we do that already?
The first item on the agenda is the March Revenue versus Expenditure Report.
Okay. Is there anyone present to speak to this report?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Pat Burns to speak on the March Revenue versus Expenditure Report.
Please state your address for the record, Pat.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Please state your address for the record, sir.
Patrick Burns, City Controller, 90 Clement Street, Springfield.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, hi, some revenue highlights for the month of March. The city collected 4.7 million in motor vehicle excise tax payments in the month of March. In the month of February, the city issued the first commitment of motor vehicle excise, which was 9.8 million. As of March 31st, 2.2 million was still outstanding of this commitment, and motor vehicle excise bills were due on March 9th. Also, departmental revenue is down 1.4 million dollars, or 8% through the first nine months of the fiscal year compared to fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Pat. Are there any questions or comments from the council? And if you could please utilize the queue. If you have a question, it would be great. We appreciate it. Um, Counselor Walsh.
Uh, yes. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. Pat, is there a reason for that difference in this year in the deficit? Is it, is it anything to do with the virus or is it just, just a budget issue?
Yes, I believe the virus is the driving force. The state of emergency started March 10th, and City Hall was closed to the public shortly thereafter. And I think we're seeing the effects of that.
Is there a concern about being able to make up that revenue?
Uh, the city has implemented a hiring and spending freeze. So the strategy is to reduce our expenditures to make up revenue that we have been losing because of the, the virus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Uh, Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Pat, just following up on Caterie's questions. Is there any revenue loss that is not related to the coronavirus?
Uh, no, the revenue prior to the COVID-19 coronavirus shutdown was pretty consistent with prior fiscal years. We were actually a little bit ahead of 2019 in comparison.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk has made clear to me that we need a roll call for all of our votes, being that we're doing this remotely. So, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On accepting the March Revenue versus Expenditure Report, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield. Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the report is approved. Madam Clerk, would you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is the confirmation of Deputy Director of Veteran Services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone present to speak to this confirmation? Uh, Commissioner, I think you need to unmute your mic.
Am I unmuted now?
You're unmuted now. We hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. So I will begin by saying that in the month of February, there was a committee that was comprised of our Chief Diversity Officer, Attorney G., Caitlin Julius, myself, and Tom Belton. We were the interview committee for the Deputy Director of Veterans Affairs position. After two interviews, one was an interview that we interviewed the candidates, and the second one was one where we asked the candidates to present to us their understanding of Chapter 115, their understanding of the operations of the Department of Veteran Services, and what was necessary in order to be successful in the position. Mr. DeCaro emerged as the candidate that all of us, including Mr. Belton's, score reflected that he was the candidate of choice. We put him before you today and ask you to confirm him as the Deputy Director. He can speak about himself, but he is currently an employee of the Department of Veteran Services.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions or comments from the council regarding the confirmation? And in fact, before we do that, Mr. DeCaro, did you want to say a few words?
Uh, no, I don't have any words at this time. Just, uh, you know, thank you to the interview board for the recommendation and also to the mayor for the recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I see Counselor Gomez has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. DeCaro, do you live in the city of Springfield?
He's on mute.
I do, yes.
All right. Um, are you a veteran yourself, sir?
I am, sir, yes.
Um, and this is just, uh, just diving in, just getting to know you, if that's all right. Um, what branch of the Army, what branch did you serve, sir?
I was in the U.S. Coast Guard.
How long did you, how long did you serve?
Uh, just short of six years.
All right. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
How about, um, how long have you been working in our Veterans Department now?
Uh... Actually, this month will be two years. May 7th was two years.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, so, one, uh, one, thank you for your service. Um, you have been highlighted from the administration as the chosen one. With that, I want to tell you that I humbly, uh, I'm going to support, support this confirmation, and we'll be talking to you, I'll be talking to you personally soon. And, you know, best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. My questions are along the line of Counselor Gomez. You know, welcome to the Veterans Department, Mr. DeCaro. And I was curious about your, what branch of the service you were in and what you did when you were in the service. What your MOS was.
I was in the, uh, the U.S. Coast Guard. Uh, I was stationed in South Florida my whole duration. Um, a lot of our cases involved either search and rescue cases or migrant interdiction and drug interdiction.
Well, wish you good luck at very important department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Uh, Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have a question about the, uh, the process. I don't remember ever having to take a vote for this position, and I'm wondering how that came about.
Well, thank you for asking, Counselor. Um, adhering to the rules of government, when we looked at the job description and we looked at the criteria, I found that there was a section that said the deputy. We always knew that the director had to be approved by the city council, but the deputy has to be approved by the city council as well, and that's why we're before you.
Are there other deputy positions, um, other than veterans that have to be approved by the city council?
Not to my knowledge. I'll let Caitlin answer that one. But to my knowledge, this is the only one that I found when I was reviewing the criteria. Caitlin?
Yeah, so this is our only one that has to be voted by council.
Record, Caitlin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yep, so my name's Caitlin Julius, and my address is 11 Aspen Road, Springfield.
Thank you. Can you repeat your answer?
Yep, so this is our only deputy position that has to go before a city council.
Yeah, I got a chance to know Joe over the winter when we were playing basketball at Open Gym. I've got guys to know him a little bit. Handles himself very well. I've heard a lot of good things about him in the department. And if he's as good as, um, uh, as good at his job as he is at rebounding, then he'll do well.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Uh, Counselor Letterman.
Thanks so much, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations, Mr. DeCaro, on your recommendation. And thank you both for your service, but also your work already in the Veteran Service Office. I was just be curious to hear from you a little bit about, you know, so far, how you enjoy your work in Veteran Service Office after two years and what you hope to accomplish in the new position.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, thank you, first off. I got out of the Coast Guard in 2006, and other military people will tell you once they get out of the service, there's always something missing. You kind of never feel like you're a part of anything, and you're looking for that, that brotherhood again. Um, and ever since I started, and I've had multiple jobs since I left the service. Um, and when I came on board two years ago, it filled this gigantic void that was inside of me that I didn't know was missing, and I didn't know how to fill that part. That's it. I mean, I'm able to sleep a little bit better at night now. I mean, for, for years, I went, uh, you know, an hour or two hours in a bed of sleep. Um, and that void has been filled, and I'm just hoping that, you know, there, there's people out there that need our assistance. I was one of them that needed a DVS assistance when I, when I first got out of the service, and I didn't know anything about it. Uh, nothing was ever told me by, you know, anybody from the city or recruiters or anything like that. So, you know, it's one of my goals is to, to help out and figure out a way to get out there and let the public know exactly what we do and that we're not affiliated with the VA and that our services are different.
That's excellent. Well, thank you very much for sharing with us. And, you know, I'm confident that your own personal experiences are going to serve you really well in this position. And when you, when you get there, I, I think you'll find you have a, a city council and administration that cares very much about those issues as well. So to the degree that we can be supportive of your efforts when you get there, we'll look forward to working with you, and I'll look forward to supporting your confirmation today.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question. I don't, I know with her presentation, maybe I might, I might have, uh, lost, uh, lost, lost in translation. How many applicants applied for, for this position, Commissioner Harris?
Originally, um, there were six individuals, I believe, who applied initially. We whittened it down to, um, three individuals who went through the interview process. Um, at the last minute, one of those individuals decided to withdraw her application, and so we were left with two individuals, Mr. DeCaro being one of them.
And my last question is, um, how long was this position, um, has gone unfilled up to, up to this point right now that we're looking to fill it?
Thank you for that. That's an excellent question, and I will refer that one to Caitlin. I know that it was unfilled for months, quite frankly. But I'll let Caitlin answer that if you have that information, Caitlin.
I'm working on just pulling it up right now and get a feel in one second.
Questions or comments from the council while Caitlin is looking for that information?
I have a question.
Counsel, Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, so, thank you. Um, could you just go over the staffing of the department? I know Tom Belton and this position that Joe's, Joe DeCaro's is applying for. I remember someone named Charlie there who ran a lot of the events, and I don't know if she's still around or, or what. But if you could, somebody just review the, the staffing of the department.
Certainly. Um, Mr. DeCaro is applying or is here to be contracted for the position that was once held by Charlie Lawrence. She was the deputy. She moved on, and so that is the position we are filling with Mr. DeCaro. In addition to Mr. DeCaro, there is an individual whose job it is to be the administrative support to the department. And I believe, Mr. DeCaro, there are four investigators in addition. Is that correct?
No, ma'am, it's not. So we do have a, an admin assistant, and then there is three investigators.
Okay. I apologize. I'm an investigator down. So there are three investigators and the administrative support. Um, and then there will be Mr. DeCaro as the deputy, and of course, Tom Belton as the head. Once Mr. DeCaro is approved, if he is this evening, then that will leave an open position in the Veterans Department.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Get that information for Counselor Ramos, I mean, Counselor Gomez.
It did. So it was last filled at the end of November, 2019.
All right. The reason why I asked, Mr. President, because I remember when we were going through budgeting last year, and there was a lot of money that, um, that was moved. Uh, well, a substantial amount of money, about 200,000, I know that, that was moved from Veterans Services. And, um, the follow-up question that was asked by Counselor Allen was one of my questions. So it kind of, um, just, I was just wondering just to figure out where we would, we're going to get this money, because I was under the assumption that Charlie was still here. But now we see that Charlie has departed. I wish her, I wish her well. That was the reason along the lines why I asked, how long was it, was it vacant? So thank you so much, and, um, I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Walsh.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I also did not realize that, that Charlie had, had left. I did, I don't know if she left before the virus or not, but we, we didn't have any kind of a coffee or anything for her, and I know she's been working for the city for quite a while. Um, my question is not so much City Hall, but will you be taking over any of the Veterans Activity Committee obligations? Because I know Charlie did a lot of those.
She did. I'm going to answer that question because I, I, Mr. Belton will be, to some degree, having an input on how Mr. DeCaro is orientated and assigned. And the, although Charlie did the Veterans Activity Committee, she did that as a part of her, um, not as a part of her work in the Department of Veteran Services, although it was an important part, but she did it as an individual who was a veteran and a member of the committee.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's not part of the deputy's job description.
So there'll be a void then on that committee, Helen?
I, I think that it's, the potential is that Mr. DeCaro could be assigned to that, but I would not be the one to be able to confirm that right now.
If I may interject, I am, uh, I joined the committee last October, the Veterans Activities Committee, and they voted me on as Secretary for the Committee. Charlie knowing that she was leaving, there has to be somebody from the department on that committee. So we ensured that something, uh, you know, one of us was on it before Charlie had left. So I currently am on the, uh, the, one of the committee members for it.
Oh, good. Very good. More good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Walsh. If there are no further questions from the council, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the confirmation of the Deputy Director of Veteran Services, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, Mr. DeCaro is confirmed. We wish you well, and thank you for your service, Madam Clerk.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Right.
Congratulations.
Will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a petition for long terrace.
Evening, councilors.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Sure. Signoli, DPW Director, 89 Bennington Street, Springfield.
Thank you.
Long Terrace and Strong Street is a T-intersection. Currently, long terrace entering it does not have a stop sign. The petition is for installation of a stop sign.
Are there any questions or comments regarding this petition from the council?
Thank you, Chris.
Anytime, Michael.
Seeing none.
I got one.
Uh, Counselor Walsh. Yeah, raised hand.
Yeah, I'm getting good with this button here. Can we use that button to vote? Raise your hand, or does it have to be, uh? That's another question for another side. Chris, I just want to know, did this come through the Traffic Commission? Because they haven't been able to meet for a while, right?
It was on... It was voted on the Traffic Commission January 13th.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Thank you. I just want to make sure they get some credit, because I know they do a lot of good work.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Whitfield.
Hi, Chris.
Hello.
What, what, what's the process to get that stop sign up?
Uh, number one, a, uh, petition needs to be submitted to me. That goes to the Traffic Commission. Um, at that time, I have two options. Option one is that I can initiate it right away based upon safety concerns for 120-day trial, uh, which things like this are, are pretty standard. Uh, or if it's a little bit more controversial, then we put it on the, immediately putting on the Traffic Commission agenda. So it's basically a letter and a petition to me, and I forward it to the Traffic Commission.
Thank you. How many signatures on the petition?
Excuse me?
How many signatures on the petition?
I believe it's 10.
Thank you. All righty.
And Counselor Whitfield, if there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on this petition?
On the petition for long terrace, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the petition is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a petition for Myrtle Street.
Okay, Myrtle Street. Um, the location, uh, Myrtle Street, just to orientate everybody, is the street that is adjacent to where Helen's office side building, the side street is Myrtle Street, and her access, a major access to her building is. Uh, so, a section on that street with this petition, and the second one, uh, is to provide service on area for her building there, uh, on Myrtle Street. And the next petition is the installation of a handicap, some handicap parking spaces at that location. So they are at the port of the, um, Health and Human Services facility at the corner of Myrtle and State.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing, seeing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the petition for Myrtle Street for the service entrance, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the petition is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item number five as well?
Item number five, a petition for Myrtle Street for handicap parking. Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the petition is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda? Yes, the petition is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is the CDBG entitlement grant and the amount of $3,912,806.
Is there anyone present to speak to this grant?
Yes, Mr. President, Tim Sheen, 26 Eckington Street, Springfield, Mass.
Thank you.
The annual CDBG entitlement, um, the council members should know that because of the virus, HUD allowed municipalities to extend out the period in time to submit their, uh, annual action plan. Springfield chose not to accept that additional time because we want to have the funding made available July 1. There is an action plan that was associated with this grant, um, that ultimately went through the public notice period. Um, this, uh, is now being ready to be filed with HUD upon your approval. Um, and hopefully the funding will be available come July 1.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this grant?
Done. Alrighty, go ahead and go ahead.
Um, Mr. President, I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand. I just wanted to just say, um, this is, um.
Gomez.
Apologize. Uh, this is a, this is a, a grant that we initially get every year. It's not necessarily COVID-related, right?
No, this is the annual entitlement that we get every year.
Fantastic. I just want to say, um, uh, good work and, uh, let's keep on getting these good dollars in. And hopefully we can get the extra, the extra bang, uh, later on down the line. But thank you for, uh, for the work that you do.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, can you walk us through, um, the major expenditures that the grant will be used for?
Sure. Um, there is a public service component that totals $616,000. Um, there, that is the non-exempt, and then there is an exempt component as well. Um, that's $110,000. Um, the difference between the exempt and non-exempt public service, um, it's a community-based development organization and that is the, um, uh, N N C C, uh, is the only one that we have in Springfield. Um, the, we have a first-time, uh, homebuyer component that's associated with this as well. Uh, the emergency rehabilitation program between the two of those, those total, uh, uh, over $800,000. Um, and, and I'm actually going into, um, there, there's three grants that you're looking at this evening. Uh, all of them are entitlement grants. There's home funding and there's also, uh, uh, HOPWA funding as well and E S G funding. But, uh, for the home funding, uh, uh, the first-time homebuyer program is in there. The emergency rehabilitation program is in there. Um, as part of the CDBG component, there's a, uh, a fairly significant, uh, park renovation component of over $800,000. Um, eh, um, I'm looking to, uh, and there's, uh, small business technical assistance and small business support. Um, that's part of it as well. Um, I think that gives you a fairly good understanding.
For the $600,000 that you mentioned in the beginning for New North Citizens Council, what was that for?
Uh, it, it's $110,000 for New North and it's 616 for all the other non-exempt public service activities.
Oh, I see. So that 600 is split up between?
Other non, it, it's basically the nonprofits that come through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
You're aware, council members, um, we went through, um, a NOFA process, uh, with the nonprofits. We got back activities that they're looking to fund. Given that the virus, uh, came on us at the end of that process, we tried to be as flexible as possible in terms of programming that money and representing the, what we got back is program activities, um, but not dedicating a pool of money to each one of the nonprofits right at this time.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you, Tim. Can I first ask that? Um, we've not talked in acronyms because I'm saying here like N C C, NOFA. I'm just trying to figure it out.
I'm sorry.
Do you know if there was like an increase from last year or this year?
Yes, I do have that, Counselor. Uh, there was a fairly large increase, uh, across the programs. Um, CDBG had an $83,000 increase.
I don't know. Um, I'm sorry, Tim, I don't mean to interrupt, but Counselor, um, President, do we want to just talk about CDBG? Or you, do you mind him answering it for the other grants as well?
You can answer it for the other grants, especially if you're gonna ask it later on as well. I mean, I.
I'm just making sure.
No, you, no, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
The home grant got an increase of $165,000. Uh, E S G increased, uh, 13,000, roughly $13,000. And HOPWA increased about, uh, $33,000.
That's good.
Yes.
Um, is there any way that, um, we could get a breakdown of how the funds are used so we can, um, just see it for ourselves?
I can get to the action plan. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, uh, Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Allen.
Thank you. My question related to whether this was an increase or decrease from last year. Um, and I know, um, Tim, you, Tim, you mentioned that in increments, but in terms of the overall total figure, is that an increase or decrease?
It, oh, it's a, it's an increase. All of the, the grant, the entitlement grant increased. Uh, so it looks like it's, uh, uh, close to $300,000 of an increase.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams, Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Davila. Counselor Allen, you're on mute.
Sorry. Um, and, um, this is a grant that comes up every year and, um, I'm just, you, when you just mentioned all the, the amounts of money that were going here or there, is that last year's amounts? Or is that a first take on this year's amounts or?
No, that, that's the annual action plan that goes out to the community, um, that allocates the resources. And then there's a public comment period on that plan before it's submitted to you for approval. And then after your approval, it then goes on to HUD. Um, the annual action plan needs to be developed every year. Um, as I indicated, um, as part of the public service component, um, the nonprofits, uh, ultimately within the city are contacted. They're asked to submit what their thoughts are relative to expenditures. Um, and, uh, those are reviewed, um, and, uh, ultimately scored. Um, and then there's subsequently awards that are made to the nonprofit community, uh, to undertake community programming. Um, some of those ultimately involve camps and things like that. We're not certain right now whether camps are gonna be, you know, going forward through the summer. Um, it, so some of the activities that ultimately, um, that were being requested, um, we, we don't know whether they're actually gonna happen. So what, rather than just say we're, we're not going to, uh, 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 acknowledge the areas that the community was saying that it wanted to have funding assigned to. We looked at it more broadly and said, here's the priority fundings under public service. And that they're going to include these types of activities, provided that we ultimately can do that.
So when you say the community, there's already a dialogue between City Hall and several nonprofits that are part of.
The, the process with C D, CDBG in terms of the allocation of resources begins in the, uh, the fall and runs right through to, to this point.
Okay, good. So, uh, so the spirit of my question beyond that is, let's just say there's, you know, an amount of money, 300,000 or something, that was contemplated to go into one nonprofit or for camps or something. And then didn't contemplate COVID happening, and now there's a different need than there was before. Is there flexibility as a result of COVID? Is there, what kind of flexibility is there to, to change the decision?
That's actually what we wanted to, to have that maximum degree of flexibility because we just don't know what activities can actually happen and what can't happen. And we didn't want to have to, uh, ultimately go through, uh, HUD's got, uh, a, a process by which you can amend your, your annual action plan. It's a timely process. It, it takes an inordinate amount of time to go through that process. We wanted to have the flexibility to be able to, uh, address what the needs are as quickly and efficiently as possible.
And do you have that? Do you have that flexibility? You do? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, uh, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Williams.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Sheen, and good to see you. Uh, my question is, I was looking over the information and it says that, let me just split up. This is a reimbursable grant. Uh, does that mean that we would spend that money? And we're getting reimbursed the money?
It, it, you have to evidence to HUD that there's been an expenditure that's been made. And then ultimately HUD allows you to draw onto the ITIS account. So what, i- 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 in answer to your question, you, it's not necessarily that you're putting out, uh, cash on the city side. You're ultimately, uh, having an invoice that has come in that the, the, uh, CDBG account ultimately can pay for.
And a follow-up to that, it may, might be similar to what Counsel Allen just asked. Uh, how do we adjust, um, going forward, um, related to the crisis, the pandemic crisis? Um, you know, just to reassure that the need is met for next year. Um, how do we adjust to that, if you have any idea?
We, we've ultimately, and the, the area that you have the largest discretion in, in, uh, relates more towards public service uh, activities. So what we've done is take the really broad categories that ultimately come under public service and incorporate it just about all of them so that we can, uh, it, if we ultimately, um, don't have a need on one side and we find that we have something that we, we have a big problem with and we want to, uh, uh, disperse funding on that, we have the ability to do that, provided that it, it's within the HUD guidelines in terms of meeting a national objective and that type of thing.
So there's some, some flexibility.
Uh, we tried to structure it so that the city, uh, and the staff, uh, would have maximum flexibility, um, to address whatever concerns that we ultimately had.
And my final question is, uh, most of this money is gonna be for nonprofits?
Uh, in terms of public service, most of it's for nonprofits, yes.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Counselor. Just a quick follow-up to my previous point. Um, in regards to this pot, is this the, also the money that our civic associations and our neighborhood councils also go to?
Uh, they're funded out of this, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Overall grant.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams, uh, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. You said that 800,000 goes to park renovations. Do you know if that's multiple parks or?
It's multiple. It's Calhoun, Dugan, and Loon Pond. And the reason why those were slated was because there's other funding sources that are picking up, uh, other costs associated with those renovations.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. If there are no further questions from the council, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approval of the CDBG entitlement grant.
Sorry, Madam Clerk. Counselor Ramos, you have your hand raised, sir?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, I, I heard Loon Pond, so I just wanted to get a little bit more information on what's, what's, uh, what's happening at Loon Pond.
Uh, I, I know that there's renovation work that's supposed to be happening. I don't have the specifics. I can certainly get them from Pat Sullivan and get them over to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On, on approving the order for the CDBG entitlement grant, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next on the, item on the agenda is for a home entitlement grant and the amount of $1,678,324.
Tim, did you want to say anything more regarding this grant or are you all set? Did you pretty much?
I, I'm happy to address any questions that the councilors might have with regards to it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the home entitlement grant order, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a HOPWA entitlement grant and the amount of $694,040.
Are there any questions or comments from the council or Tim regarding this grant?
Just have one question, Mr. President. This, uh, does all this money go to one organization, Tim? Or is it a multitude of other organizations? Because I know that of one organization that kind of covers a big, a big area specifically to, uh, to HOPWA. I just wanted to just ask that question.
I believe that it is one, uh, and it's a regional, um, uh, grant as well. Uh, it's not just Springfield.
Is that, uh, organization New North Citizens Council?
Um, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can certainly find out.
No, I just, I, it is a, because I, I talk to her a lot. Um, our school committee woman, Mariah Perez, is, uh, the HOPWA coordinator. So I'll just see if, I know that, uh, Counsel Whitfield that asked, how much of an increase is this, uh, funding again?
Just, um, to come back to the, the funds are allocated, uh, throughout the, uh, municipal area. Just so that the councilors know.
Okay.
And the, the purpose of the grant ultimately is to, uh, alleviate housing burden, housing cost burdens uh, and services for, uh, the day.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for your response.
No problem.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the HOPWA entitlement grant, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield? Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton? Pass. Um, pass. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes, the grant is approved. Can councilors please remember to mute their mics when they are not speaking? Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is HHS Care's Act supplemental funding and the amount of $568,340.
Tim, did you want to speak to this grant? Did you have any?
I, I believe this, this one is Helen's if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, is it?
It's Helen's grant.
All right, Commissioner.
Okay, this grant is coming from HERSA. Um, it is a supplemental grant to our health center. Uh, as you know, we have a health center called Health Services for the Homeless. It's our 330 health center. This supplemental grant is for the most part because usually we bill for services. Uh, telehealth is not providing the same kind of revenue that we would get ordinarily through, um, through our work. And so this grant will supplement staffing, um, staffing revenue.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So Commissioner, I just wanted to make sure I understood you. So this is, this is specifically going just to the healthcare for the homeless program?
That's correct. It is going, as you know, we are. That's correct. It is going, as you know, we are partners in that program is Mercy Medical Center um and SMAC, Open Door, Open Pantry. That money will be able to sustain the partnership because we will be losing revenue because of our inability to bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Are there any other counselors wishing to speak on this grant? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the HHS Cares Act supplemental funding, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the?
The next item on the agenda is ESG entitlement grant in the amount of three hundred thirty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Tim, did you want to add anything?
Yes, Mr. President. Um this is uh we ultimately work with the Continuum of Care to identify the priorities associated with this grant. Um it's basically to uh uh it's dedicated to meet the needs of the homeless or at-risk households. We developed the priorities around the grant and then ultimately put out a uh a notice of funding availability out to the providers for those services and they respond to that. That that notice of funding availability will come after HUD approves the allocation.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Williams, John, mute.
Oh, gosh. I should know that. Um so I just had a quick question in regards to already still in working with the CLC. Um do we have a breakdown on, I know there's like first time home buyers. I know there's like rental tenant based rental assistance. Do you know the percentages for the funding that goes to each?
Directly under ESG?
Yes, emergency solutions, yes.
Yeah, um I I can pull that out for you. I don't I in terms of how the priorities are looking down for for this uh for the next program year, uh I I don't have the dollar allocations direct for ESG. I have it for the overall six plus million dollars.
All right, thank you. In regards, I just want one follow up. Is there ever a a comment period for municipalities to, I guess, the feds on this one, right? The federal government for this grant? Because I mean, it would be great to see increases in some of those priority areas. So I was just wondering, is there ever a comment period for cities to um solicit feedback?
Yes, it it ultimately you go, all of these entitlement programs have uh an allocation process associated with them. Um and uh they go out for public comment and obviously the city, if it had public comment, would certainly make it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Williams. Are there any other counselors wishing to speak with respect to this grant?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Uh Mr. Shin, I just uh kind of thinking outside of the box here. Uh looking at somebody, uh the grand purpose is also say that it's used for or that it will be used for first time homeowners, tenant based rental assistance. I'm just thinking of the current crisis that we have. Once can any of this money may possibly be allocated uh in the future, once the eviction moratorium is over, to help prevent homelessness uh due to COVID nineteen after the moratorium is lifted. Just thinking outside of the box.
It it certainly could. Um and we also are looking at that as an issue um with the ESG funding that we we have gotten uh through the uh Careless Act as well. There's also a a component uh that's coming through home for rental assistance and mortgage assistance as well. I mean, I I think it it in having the conversation earlier today, uh we're recognizing that uh that at-risk population in terms of housing, i- if they go, if if they're out three plus months, the likelihood that they're going to be able to make a rent payment to cover three months for the rent is unlikely. Um and or, you know, uh of housing payments in general. Um so we want to be prepared to be able to address that to the greatest degree possible.
Right, I think of course, solution to that will be that the state to extend the uh the state eviction moratorium. Uh however, I do believe the moratorium goes uh six to ninety days afterwards. Um I can recall now, but I think it will be a great service to the city. And I will strongly encourage you, and I think that would be a project very worthwhile pursuing.
Well, our position on it is that it's a stabilizing force, just in terms of the city's housing market in general. Uh it it both the the owner of the inventory needs to be stabilized in terms of having rent come back in so they can do improvements and things like that to their property. And there needs to be some level of assistance for those that ultimately can't afford to to make those payments. Um our our primary goal is to keep people in the housing that they have and ensure that yeah the housing stock is stabilized.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. If there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the ESG entitlement grant, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield. Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams. Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a Mass Substance Abuse Collaborative Grant Award in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Counselors, this is our uh grant that is for substance disorders. It pays for staffing and community programs uh for the department and the city of Springfield. They're also uh the lead on this grant with Chicopee and East Long Meadow.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions or comments regarding this grant from the council? Counselor Letterman?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, could you um tell us what uh staffing position uh this grant covers? And then do we know yet what the community initiatives and partnerships with those other communities are? Are those to be determined?
Uh this uh covers uh one point five positions in the department. And so what they were working on prior to COVID is to assure that we had a curriculum in East Long Meadow, Springfield, and Chicopee where we were going into the schools, and we've been doing this for a number of years, going into the schools and doing education with the students in those municipalities. Um I'm sure that the staff is working hard on how to retool uh what they were going to do for the uh last quarter of this year and into the summer months.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. If there are no further questions from the council, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the Mass Substance Abuse Collaborative Grant, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item then on the agenda is a Brown Brownfield Assessment Grant in the amount of ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Is there anyone present to speak to this grant?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh this is uh to do a Brownfield Assessment Grant on a city-owned property on Lyman Street. Um Mass Development has awarded uh the Community Development Department with the ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety dollar uh reimbursable grant. And uh we'd like to advance the the environmental work out so that we can have more informed uh requests for proposals, information uh as to the environmental contamination uh associated with the site. To inform those that would respectively be responding to that.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Mr. President. Um you said Lyman Street?
Yes, it's uh one uh one fifty-five, I believe.
Is that um I know Lyman Street, it hugs the?
It it's the uh the property that is right in the large parking lot.
So on the uh uh where, so it's after the pizzeria on the left-hand side?
Yes, uh on the right-hand side.
Right-hand side.
Yeah, it you're so you're going up to Lassard uh and he's they've got the parking lot that comes out to between Chestnut and Lyman.
Yep.
And then it's the next property up.
All right.
Up to the glass, so.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council regarding this grant? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the Brownfield Assessment Grant, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a homeless youth grant increase in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
I can speak to that, Mr. President. Uh we uh ultimately uh got a a sixty thousand dollar increase in that this grant award uh from the Executive Office for Health and Human Services. Um and uh the primary purpose of the the program uh is to provide housing assistance to homeless youth.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor Gomez.
Is there a specific age that um we consider youth? Is it twenty-one and under, eighteen and oh eighteen and under?
The the population is under typically under twenty-one.
All right, and we'll um this, are we helping we helping them establish um apartments or some kind of like a RAF payment or something to get them into something?
Is to get them into some type of stabilized housing si- situation.
Fantastic. Congratulations on the increase.
Thank you.
You, Counselor Gomez. If there are no further questions from the council regarding this grant, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the homeless youth grant increase, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the?
The next item on the agenda is a Massachusetts Census Division twenty twenty municipal grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Is there anyone present to speak to this grant?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lindsey Hackett, Deputy CFO, AD Tamarack Drive in Springfield. This grant um was awarded to the Elections Department. It's the Massachusetts Census twenty twenty municipal grant. And its purpose is to aid municipalities in completing and accurately counting for the twenty twenty census. Um and the funding is going to be used for outreach efforts and other, any other resources or materials to make the process more efficient in reaching the masses. Um this funding is specifically for at-risk communities that are often undercounted.
Thank you, Lindsey. Counselor Walsh?
Uh yes, thank you, Lindsey, for that. I'm just curious about uh are there any statistics on how we're doing with the sentence, with the sense, not the sentence, with the census?
I don't.
Has there been like um eighty-five percent participation? Or do you have any of those statistics?
I don't have any of those stats in front of me, no.
No, I'd be I'd be interested to know how how we're doing because we all know how important getting the right numbers is.
I'll reach out to Gladys tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I is Gladys the Gladys is the point person for the census? Is that accurate to say?
Yes.
So probably this is it would be question better suited, you know, for her, but if you you may have had conversations with her uh relative to, you know, what her thoughts are in terms of retooling uh as I think kind of the more traditional outreach efforts that we might use uh are going to be difficult uh in the coming months. So do we have any ideas of how we're going to spend the money creatively to try to up the response rate?
That's a great question. I actually haven't spoken to Gladys about um any of that or, you know, changing up what they're doing or new ideas. I haven't spoken to Gladys about that, actually.
So that that might be a good idea, Mr. Chairman, uh for one of our future committees of the whole. Uh or I know I we've talked about sort of resuming committee meetings in the near future. I I yeah, I think the census is a time sensitive issue, but a very important one. And I I believe, you know, they've either talked about it, they are extending the uh timeline on it. But I think for us to maybe have a a meeting specifically on the census, to Counselor Walsh's point uh about finding out where we're at and how, you know, we can also encourage constituents to respond.
Absolutely, and I will reach out to Gladys in the very near future and I will keep you posted as to when that meeting will occur. Uh I actually asked for her to be at this meeting, but I did ask, I figured there would be a lot of questions around the census. So uh my apologies and we'll definitely set that meeting up. Uh Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Fenton, followed by Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Ms. Hackett. Just to be clear, um this is for a municipal census or the federal census?
The federal census, but it's a municipal grant.
So are we are we doing our yearly census still or is that going to be conjunction with?
Um I believe we're doing both. But, you know, Gladys would Gladys would be the person.
Doubly more Gladys question than you. Okay, okay, right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I saw recently a tool. It's called uh twenty twenty census dot gov slash response rates. And so you can look up in real time, day by day, the self-response rates across the country. The national self-response rate is fifty-eight point six currently. Massachusetts is a little bit above that at sixty point seven percent. Hampden County is a little bit above the Massachusetts average at sixty-two percent. And Springfield's self-response rate is currently fifty-two point three percent.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Great information.
Uh, Mr. President?
Uh Adam, if you could just raise your hand in the queue, did you have something related to what Counselor Fenton just said?
Yes, just that uh myself and Counselor Ramos were a part of a a regional conversation just this just this past week. And it's uh Counselor Ramos and myself will be introducing some kind of uh some kind of an initiative for the for the colleagues. We're going to reach out to them, specific to the census and on um those specific questions that we've heard from before. Just the response rate is kind of what they're saying relatively all right, but they would love to kick it uh kick it back into gear. but they would love to kick it, kick it back into gear and get people motivated to respond if it's via by mail or essentially, when we meet with Gladys, what is it that she thinks that we can do? Because I know that the census does come to your mailbox, but it's, people aren't necessarily turning them in, and they're doing some outreaches, like in communities of color, to make sure that they turn those in. Because City Hall has been closed. They haven't been able to bring it down to them, or if not, if they're aware, if they have access to the internet, which becomes a problem that they can do it via, via, via internet.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, for the information, as well as Counselor Fenton, Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. My only, was just a comment in the sense that I'd be really interested to see how the money is supposed to be expended. A lot of money is based in outreach efforts, which of course involves the office going out into the public. And amongst the pandemic, I would really be interested to see if this money could be curbed or caviated a different way to get those outreach efforts out. So I second Counselor Letterman's point about scheduling a meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Point noted, and I will get on that tomorrow morning. Counselor Brown?
Man, that's kind of loud, right?
It's loud.
Was that better?
That is better.
Um, I was curious also as far as who's, who's actually being employed? Because a lot of the people who are going in to the, the at-risk areas are going to be basically in some of the areas that I'm in. I'm just curious, is there, is there, is there ways to employ people from our areas? Is there money, the jobs available to hire once the pandemic goes away?
So the grant, I don't have a breakdown for the budget for the grant. It does say outreach, so I don't know if that includes paying people for their time or if it includes putting together volunteer efforts. I just, I don't have that information, but I can definitely work on getting that for you.
Okay, yeah, because I'd be curious, because if there is any maybe part-time outreach, I know a lot of people in, in, say, mine and Counselor Edwards and Gomez area, you know, we would have people, I think, that would kind of fit the demographics. You know, I just want to make sure that we have people in actually be effective. And we're actually, we're actually in redistricting. So we work a lot with the census. So if there's anything you guys need, you guys can always give us, give our office a call. But it's something that, but Rep. Williams is Vice Chair of Redistricting. So it's something, the census is something that we work on, that I work on a lot.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Hackett, just a quick follow-up. Just to echo what Counselor Letterman and Counselor Williams say, we definitely will be suited immediately with Commissioner Yola to do some follow-up. And although this is more Yola question, Commissioner Yola question, I would look forward to hear how, with the outreach efforts, how that's going to look like, particularly with the pandemic. In specifically, if we do send out people to do door-to-door, we are going to protect those, those census takers going door-to-door and to make sure that we catch as many people as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Davila. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Oh, wait a minute.
Was there...
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I saw, I saw the thumbs up. Counselor Edwards?
I'm still, I apologize, but...
That's all right. Now, it's a hands raised when, when you do it, sir. I got you.
Okay.
Where's yours?
Counselor Brown brought up redistricting, and he said if we had any questions or requests, I don't know how appropriate it is, but my request and question is, or is that I need a state senator from the city of Springfield. And many years ago, I did run for the State Senate. My campaign was about that particular issue. And the city of Springfield, as large as it is, as an urban center, should have a senator who is from the city of Springfield demographically.
Counselor Edwards, Counselor Edwards. I appreciate your perspective, Counselor Edwards. And so I did mute you. I just want to make sure we're staying on the subject of the grant, Counselor Edwards. And I think you can have a conversation with Mallow offline about the State Senate and who should be there. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll regarding this grant if there are no further questions?
On approving the Massachusetts Census Division 2020 Municipal Grant?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
I'm not even sure we got clarification on what this is going to be used for, but I don't want to hold it up, so I'm going to say yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila? Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
We're working on that right now, Counselor Edwards. Don't worry, I got you, brother. Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The grant is accepted, and we will have that follow-up meeting with Gladys. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a donation to the Police Department in the amount of $50,000.
Lindsey, can you speak to this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so this is a donation, as outlined in the HCA, between Insa and the city of Springfield for the municipal marijuana, I mean, municipal medicinal marijuana HCA. So this is just an annual $50,000 payment that goes towards the Police Department.
Counselor Walsh? You might need to unmute yourself, Counselor Walsh.
How do we accept grants, $50,000? Don't we take those all together?
Well, I was going to, was it $50,000 or less?
Yes.
I was going to hear item number 15 and number 16, if you don't mind, Gatorine. I'm sorry, I'm off my game. $50,000, I thought it was $50,000 or more, but it might be $50,000 or less. So I appreciate bringing that to my attention, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Letterman? Did you have a question regarding this grant?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lindsey, is the grant, does it just go into the general operating funds of the department? Or is it earmarked for any particular purpose?
It's actually, it's, it's explained in the HCA as a donation with no specific outlined use. So it does just go into their donation accounts, which, you know, can use for their needs.
So are we, we're voting to accept it and authorize expenditure of it? Or are we just voting to accept it and it'll get looped in later?
Nope, both.
So we're voting to accept it and allow it to be spent as seen fit by the department?
Yeah, it's one and the same as, as I understand it. When you accept it, you're authorizing expenditure, I thought. It's always, always been one vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Hackett, just to, for clarity. So we are voting to accept the $50,000. Is that the last phase of this host agreement? Or is that going to be a yearly payment? Also, are we, the 2.5 tax gross sales revenue, that's going to be for the entirety of, as long as the entity is in business?
So I don't have the HCA in front of me, but this is separate from the 2.5. So this is just a flat $50,000 annual payment. I don't have the HCA in front of me. I know they got it last year. I don't know if this is the second or third year, and I don't know if it stops after the third year.
But, so this is 50,000 donation for the host agreement yearly, as long as the entity exists? Right, as long as the entity exists. And I'm looking at the contract right now.
Oh.
Additionally, Hampton Care should pay to the city 2.5 of the gross sales revenue for each year of operation to be paid on a quarterly basis, 60 days from the end of each quarter. So I'm waiting that they're going to be paying 2.5 gross sales revenue for the entirety of, as long as they're in business.
That's correct. That comes separately as a payment to the fund.
And do we have any estimation how much that 2.5 may yield?
Um, I know, I've, I've looked it up before. I just don't have the number off the top of my head. We can get that for you.
Okay, and that 2.5 in gross sales, is that going to be going to the city or to the police?
The city's general fund.
So the 50 is going to be going into the SPV to be used as a fed, but the 2.5 are going to go to the city. But we're voting only the 50, correct? Just to be clear.
We've already what?
We're only voting on the 50?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hackett.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, just for a pointer of, of information. Counselors, I just want to, you know, for you guys to understand, this is for the medicinal host community agreement. This has nothing to do with recreation. I know some of the colleagues weren't on the council at the time when this host community agreement was negotiated and accepted. This $50,000 is part of their facility that is on Cottage Street. So this is totally something separate. It's medicinal, not recreation. And, and those questions that Counselor Davila asked were kind of relative to that. So just so we're aware that this is just the medicinal host community agreement and has nothing to do with the residential, I mean residential, the recreational use of marijuana.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, for your point of clarification. If there are no further questions from the council, Madam Clerk, can we please call Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would like to see if the Finance Department this week could forward to us what the last donation that was received under this HCA agreement, what that ultimately was spent on. And, and then perhaps in a later finance committee, we can discuss this one.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. If there are no further questions from the council, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On accepting the Police Department donation of $50,000. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call item number 16, and then we'll take all of the remaining grants together?
Point of, point of information, President Hurst. I apologize. I heard that, I think you're muted, or maybe we have a, you gave me the floor? Because I can't hear you, I apologize. Just that I know in the documents that it states, I heard that Counselor Davila, I forgot, had mentioned the actual company by its prior name. And if there's a way that we can make sure, so there's no confusion later on, that those documents are amended not to say Hand and Care Facility, because they're no longer known as that, they're known as Insa.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Madam Clerk, can you please call item number 16, please?
The next item on the agenda is a mass development grant in the amount of $49,973.
Is there anyone present who can speak to this grant? Either Lindsey or Tim?
This is an HHS grant. I just don't know if Helen's there. I can read the talking points of the grant, though. So this grant is, okay.
Go ahead, Lindsey. You were doing well, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. This grant is awarded to Springfield HHS for the Health Services for the Homeless Program. And it's to provide primary and preventative health care and social services to medically underserved individuals and families. And it will be used for dental equipment and IT upgrades.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this grant?
Let me, let me just say that this grant is different than the other one in that this one is specific to oral health and dentistry. Thank you.
Got it. If there are no questions or comments from the council, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Madam Clerk? Can't operate without your attorney. Madam Clerk, can you hear us? I apologize, counselors. I am texting Madam Clerk as we speak. Madam Clerk?
Got to be baby-related.
Imagine so.
Just when I was thinking, we should switch permanently to this.
We'll take a minute recess until Attorney, until Attorney Davis comes back.
I'm, I'm sorry, Counselor, were you waiting for me?
Yes, yes, can you please call the roll?
I'm sorry. City Hall, they got kicked out of Zoom in that room that they're, in the conference room that they're in.
Okay.
I was hoping to try to find a way for Counselor Curran to stay in on the meeting. So he's coming down to my office now, I think.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. Okay, we'll take a minute recess. It's not a big deal. You let us know when to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I can heat up my coffee now.
Why did they get kicked out of the room?
They didn't get kicked out of the room. The computer kicked them out of Zoom.
Oh, the computer, okay.
So what happens with Zoom accounts is they don't buy it. They only get 40 minutes for free, and then it probably ended that little window or hour, maybe that's what it was. Or it timed out, could be anything.
Counselors, we are still on live, and so if we could just be mindful of that.
I'll jump in for one second just to speak about the technical things. What happens down in the conference room at City Hall is the screen itself goes to sleep if you don't move the mouse for, I think, 45 minutes. So likely what happened is the computer running the screen went to sleep, and then it kicked them out. All you need to do is reopen the meeting, join again. It's fairly simple to do, but that has happened pretty frequently to them at City Hall.
Counselor Hurst?
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Brenda. I just wanted to say, when you scheduled the meeting with Gladys, can you please invite the library? Because they got a $90,000 grant to do outreach in, and I think February or March, but it was like face-to-face outreach. So I would like to know how they're going to, you know, change their outreach as well, the Library Department.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Attorney Davis, are we all set?
I'm going upstairs right now to see if I can help them move the mouse, and then I'll take the vote from upstairs.
Okay, sounds good. We'll wait for you.
Okay, Counselor, I'm sorry about that. I'm ready when you are.
I think we're in the process of calling the roll, Attorney Davis, regarding this grant. So if you could do that, that'd be greatly appreciated.
On accepting the mass development grant, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. The grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call items number 17 through 25 together, please?
Item 17 is state aid to public library grant increased in amount of $5,313. Number 18 is a Police Department donation to the K-9 unit in the amount of $2,065. Number 19 is a Massachusetts Cultural Council grant in the amount of $2,250. Number 20 is a police and fire donation in the amount of $1,000. Number 21 is a police silver brick donation in the amount of $500. Number 22 is a donation to police, fire, and HHS in the amount of $300. Number 23 is Health and Human Services donation in the amount of $200. Number 24 is a Health and Human Services donation in the amount of $200. And number 25 is a Police Department donation in the amount of $50.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please call the roll on those grants?
On accepting each grant and donation, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. The grants are approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a budget transfer across departments from controllers to planning and economic development, I believe.
Is there anyone that can speak to this order?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. This order is to transfer $21,254.06 from the Reserve for Contingency account over to the Planning Department. This is to cover sick and vacation time payout for one of the positions that was filled. The person left.
Thank you, Lindsey. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, this requires a two-thirds roll call vote for passage. Can you please call the roll?
On accepting the budget.
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. All those in favor of suspending Rule 19, say aye. Not 100% sure if that is okay, Madam Clerk. Do we need a roll call for that as well?
Unfortunately, yes, we, yes, we do, Counselor.
Okay. Please call the roll on suspending Rule 19.
On suspending Rule 19, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a bill of prior year in the amount of $1,788 for DPW.
Pleasant to speak to this order.
Yes, thank you. This is a request to pay a previous year's bill FY19 from DPW for services rendered in FY19 out of FY20's budget.
Thank you. Are there any comments regarding this order from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, this requires a majority roll call vote for passage.
On approving the payment of the bill of prior year, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. On suspending Rule 19, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On suspending Rule 19, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
You're on mute. You're.
All right, sorry, sorry. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda? Thank you, Council Walsh. Madam Clerk?
Can you tell us what item number it is?
It is item number.
Item number, item number 28 is the grant. You're welcome. Order granting a permanent easement to Verizon, a permanent easement to Verizon New England.
Is there anyone present to speak to this order?
I might be able to speak to it. Hold on. This is, this is, this is for the Brightwood Project, and this is to get Verizon Wireless Permanent Easement in for Brightwood.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this order? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, this requires a two-thirds, two-thirds majority roll call vote from the council. Can you please call the roll?
On the order granting the permanent easement, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh? Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. On suspending Rule 19 to take this order up in one vote, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On suspension of Rule 19, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yeah.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call item number 29 on the agenda, please?
Item 29 is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the sale of West Side College Street.
Hi, me again. So this one is for a quitclaim deed for the sale of West Side Cottage Street to Thue Stewart. And I have some notes about it. It's in a butter lot sale. Square footage is 5,000. The assessed value is $23,200. And the price, which is 10 squares, 10 cents a square foot, is $500. The proposed use is for a fenced-in backyard, and the fence will be installed within one year of the date of closing.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this order? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? This requires a majority roll call vote for passage.
On approving the quitclaim deed, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, on suspending Rule 19 to take this order up in one vote, can you please call the roll?
On the suspension of Rule 19, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Council Whitfield?
Absolutely.
Yes. Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Council Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the final item?
The final item on the agenda is a resolution.
To speak to this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to try to be as fast as possible because I know it's the tail end of our meeting. I appreciate the chance to, if anybody could put their mic on mute, because I can hear some feedback. I would just want to say that I'm proud to have joined all 12 of my colleagues from across the city and urgent state leaders to enact on a Massachusetts Vote by Mail program for the 2020 election cycle and beyond. Voting is a fundamental right and is a guarantee in the U.S. Constitution in the midst of highly contagious infectious disease. And we implore you to ensure safe and health, and healthy ballot access in 2020. We ask for the state legislator to act for the urgency in reviewing and passing a Vote by Mail program in Massachusetts for this election cycle. Our constituents deserve the opportunities to exercise their right to vote without risk of exposure to a deadly virus. Every voter in the Commonwealth deserves a safe chance of participating in the democratic process, even though that this extreme, this extremely challenging time for our country. In recent years, with many of the safeguards available, vote by mail has become a gold standard for voter access and participation. There are many excellent programs across the country in states including Colorado, Utah, Oregon, Washington, and Hawaii. In response to the COVID-19, more states have stepped forward, including New York, New Hampshire, and Maryland, to ensure ballot access. Just a couple of points is that we know that turnout, we don't likely, will likely increase, but not for all groups. So we think about our Native American brothers and sisters. We have, the questions of security may exchange some kinds of security concerns for others depending on protocol. In the long run, the costs might be lower. Voters' perspective, some may be critical, but essentially what we have seen and heard is that once they try it, they usually like it. And on an administrative's perspective, it takes care of some of the issues, and we could probably move into talking about a longer standard only during the pandemic. As of right now, we know that, as of today, the governor has given a four-phase approach on opening up the state. When this resolution was presented, Mr. President, at the time, we were not aware of where we were on flattening the curve. We've seen a lot of things happening out of different states, basically in Milwaukee and Wisconsin, that it left a lot of folks, a lot of folks in the dark of not being able to vote and vote safely. With that, before I read the resolution into order, I know that I want to thank all of my colleagues on the City Council for co-sponsoring. Usually, something like this doesn't need everyone to co-sponsor, but gladly, everyone thought this was an initiative that would keep our folks safe and show first that we're keeping the residents of Springfield, keeping the residents of Springfield aware of, yes, there is going to be safe ways to vote. But essentially, if this was a way to get the ballot to certain individuals, so then we can exercise our right in September and on this big election coming in November, that we can, we can, we can instill or urge at least the conversation to start happening before this gets ahead of us down the line. But for the most part, if there's any questions, I'm willing to take the questions, but without, without objection, I would read the result into, into order. Whereas on Tuesday, April 7, 2020, Wisconsin held its primary election with in-person voting, despite being under a shelter-in-place order since March 25, 2020. And whereas concerns about the outbreak of the coronavirus for the Wisconsin primary contributed to a shortage of poll workers, leading to the National Guard dispersing over 2,000 troops to serve in their stead. And whereas, due to the lack of poll workers in the city of Milwaukee, opened only five of their 180 polling locations, where the average wait time to vote was an hour and a half to two hours. And whereas having voters and poll workers of polling stations for hours is dangerous and runs counter to social distancing and best practices aimed at limiting the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the states of Oregon, Washington, and Colorado And whereas, the states of Oregon, Washington, and Colorado conduct their elections completely by mail. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which dictates the city of Springfield's elections, policies, and procedures, has already begun implementing voting reform measures such as early voting for certain elections. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which does not currently allow for no execution absentee ballot voting, has accepted recommendations to classify absence of your polling location as a precautionary measure in response to COVID nineteen as an allowed qualification for a mail-in ballot. And whereas, the city of Springfield has at least two elections slated for the fall of 2020 and the state primary election on September first and the state election on November third. And whereas, the city of Springfield and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts can further our commitment to the health and safety of residents by taking all of the necessary and thoughtful steps now as it relates to our upcoming election. And whereas, to prevent the continuing spread and/or recurrence of COVID nineteen, the city of Springfield and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts should plan for increased absentee ballot requests, increased polling locations, staffing levels, and potentially the implementation and management of an emergency all-vote-by-mail election. Therefore, be it resolved that the Springfield City Council has a hearing to explore preparation for the upcoming 2020 elections in September and November, including the feasibility of an all-vote-by-mail election due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, and that representatives from the Secretary of State's Office, the Springfield Elections Department, and other relevant state and city departments, voting advocacy organizations, and members of the public be invited to testify.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Gomez. I see Counsel Ramos, Counsel Letterman, and Counsel Walsh all present in the queue. Counsel Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Gomez, for putting this resolution forward. Now, I was one of the first to sign on to this resolution for several reasons. As we all know, right now, we are only taking up issues that are of importance and of priority issues. We've modified our City Council agenda to include issues that are either time-sensitive or or urgent in some way. And this is one that is very, very important and very urgent for us to take up because we're talking about democracy and the ability for people in our city to be able to voice their opinion and elect leaders that are not only going to get them through this pandemic, but also potentially get them through the recovery once we eventually go back to some normalcy. Back in two thousand and eighteen, I joined President Hearst, Counsel Gomez, and Counsel Walsh on a trip to Denver, Colorado, as we all know. And the purpose of that visit was to explore the marijuana industry, the recreational marijuana industry. Little did we know that one of the biggest and most surprising and innovative ideas that we would come back with was the valet voting idea. It was amazing. The way that, the way that people were voting in Denver that day that we were there was the most convenient way that I could imagine people being able to vote. A ballot is automatically mailed to every registered voter. The Secretary of State's Office in Colorado sends out a ballot automatically to every single voter, and it is up to them whether they want to vote or not, right? They fill it out, they sign it, and they seal it, and then mail it back, or they can go to any location and hand it to an attendant that is waiting at the voting location. They don't have to get out of the cars, they don't need to make any contact with anybody, just hand over the ballot. So, it's perfect for this that we're going through, right? If we had valet voting now, it would make it very convenient for people to be able to vote in a way that keeps everyone safe. I'm encouraged by the Secretary of State's proposal to have mail-in, mail-voting for the general election. However, I'm concerned that his proposal does not include all elections. And I'm hopeful that eventually we will be able to move towards a permanent mail, vote-by-mail process in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for all elections. In addition to vote-by-mail, there are other innovative ideas that I'm hopeful that the state legislature will explore, including expanding early voting for all elections, not just every other year. Having same-day voter registration because there are so many people who go to the polls and only to find out that they forgot to change their add-the-voting address or and change their voting address, and then they're, they have to go back to their old voting precincts, which discourages a lot of people from, from, from voting. So, I'm hopeful that we will move towards same-day voter registration as well. Hopefully, that we will explore having more accessible and convenient polling locations. There are other municipalities in the state of Colorado that actually have voting locations at Dunkin' Donuts, at Walmarts, where people naturally convene, right? And so, those are some of the things that we can explore as a state and that we can encourage as a municipal government for future elections and make, to make voting accessible to everyone and increase voter turnout. Studies have shown that these measures increase voter turnout by double digits percentage-wise, and, and I'm hopeful that that will be the result when we make these changes. So, again, I support this resolution a hundred percent. I thank my colleague for putting it forward, and I encourage all my colleagues to support it.
Thank you, Counsel Ramos, Counsel Letterman, followed by Counsel Walsh.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you to our colleague Counsel Gomez for taking the lead to author this resolution. I'm encouraged by the number and the unanimous nature of the co-sponsorship because I think it shows how seriously the members of the Springfield City Council take the fact that voting is essential and that it is the right of every single citizen of the city of Springfield, of the Commonwealth, and of our country to be able to make their voices heard when it comes to deciding who their elected officials are going to be, and that's especially important in the times that we are currently living in. And I think that when you look at the report or the information that was released today by the governor relative to the phased reopening of the Commonwealth, one of the things that I took away that's key is we really don't completely know, no matter how close we're talking about or how far out we're talking about, what the future is going to hold. Until we have a vaccine developed, there may not be a chance to go back to what we might consider as normal. Rather, we're talking more so about a new normal in a, in a, taking into account efforts to keep everybody as safe as possible. And I think that ensuring vote-by-mail is available to the people of the Commonwealth and the people of the city of Springfield is going to need to be a part of that new normal. I also think that our body has already shown in the past its commitment to ensuring that the rights of voters is protected and that all voters have the information that they need to make informed decisions during these types of elections. We've done so in terms of passage of legislation that we all worked together on for our municipal elections in the past, and I think that this is an important step for the future to make sure that everybody has access to safely cast a ballot, whether that is in a vote-by-mail situation or whether they are able to make it to a polling location. And so, I'm certainly going to be supporting the resolution, and I hope that we will hear good news from the state legislature and the governor about this very important issue in the near future. The last thing I'd point out is there are actually elections taking place right now, special elections across the Commonwealth in which the only way to be able to vote is if you have the information necessary to request an absentee ballot or if you are going to be in a position to actually go to the polls on that day. And I think that we should never be asking our constituents to choose between staying healthy and exercising their right to vote. So, this is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Letterman, Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I concur. Thank you, Counsel Gomez, for bringing this up, and thank you, Counsel Ramos, for talking about our experience in Denver because that was one of the most amazing things when we were out there. As we were leaving City Hall, we could see this long line of cars. They kept coming and coming and coming to Denver City Hall and stopping, and we had no idea what it was. And when we asked, they said it was valet voting. I think there were even people on bikes. I'm not quite sure if they were, but the turnout, they said, has increased so much with the people getting the ballots mailed to them. So, I'm very happy that this is a unanimous idea. I think it's timely. I think it's an idea whose time has come, and I hope we will be very successful in pushing this effort because what I have seen and what I have read, not only is it timely, but it is very popular throughout the United States. So, I think Springfield and Massachusetts should be leaders in getting people to vote. And of course, we all know that the right to vote is protected by our military and how important it is to keep those freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. If there are no further comments from the council, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, just a quick comment. Counsel Davila.
The floor is yours, Counsel Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to briefly, because my colleagues have already pretty much said everything so eloquently. I'm happy to join this resolution as well, like Counsel Letterman just said, simply because it's the right thing to do. I just have a quick question for clarification, Counsel Gomez. My understanding that the bills currently in the House and the Senate addressing this issue do not cover vote-by-mail for September, is that correct, only for November?
Counselor Gomez.
To be, to be frank, if there was an amendment done that I wasn't aware of, I was not aware that that specific vote-by-mail was not in September. I was under the presumption that it's still for September and November.
I, I do believe, I do believe it does not include September, which if that's the case, I would be very disappointed. Either way, I do, I do think that we, as a municipality, as leaders, need to continue to push forward and make this election happen by mail, both in September and in November, to the extent that we can legally do so. Another point that I want to point out is that if we, for the elections, we need to really discuss how we are going to protect our poll workers with masks and all sanitizers and all the equipments that they need for this. And so, I'm happy to put this, I compliment you, Counsel Gomez, for putting this forward, and I am happy, more than happy, to support this resolution.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. If there are no other comments from the council, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on this resolution?
I will be sure to add each counselor as a co-sponsor too. I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Thank you.
No problem. On accepting the resolution, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton. Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, the resolve is approved. Madam Clerk, is there any further business before the council?
There is no further business before the council, but I'd like to say, I'd like to send my condolences to Counsel Williams. I haven't spoken to him or seen him, and I'm very sorry for your loss.
I appreciate that, attorney. I really do. And I also want to extend my congratulations to you. Sorry for the feedback.
Thank you.
For the new birth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davis. Seeing that there's no further business, we will rest until our weekly update on Thursday at eleven thirty and then our following hearings meeting, May eighteenth at six thirty. As a reminder, the time has not changed for the hearings meeting. It will remain at six thirty, as we noticed folks earlier, or actually, probably close to a week ago, and that time was six thirty. So, we will keep that meeting at six thirty, and I will see you all then.